All right, we have a quorum. We don't have a full board tonight, but we can have a quorum. So, all right, thank you, everyone. I imagine that Katie and Heather are on the way, so we'll see when we get here. Just running through the agenda, we start with community comments. Then we have your report from Kevin Hamilton, who's the school principal here. Then Mary Lund Dean will take us, yep, they're here. Mary Lund Dean will take us through the special services information update. John will take us through the leadership succession monitoring report. We have a new policy to warn, which is the education record policy. If we haven't covered it all, we have time for the superintendent report, but we may have covered it all by then. Committee reports after that, moving the minutes from the previous meeting. I have a couple of other business items. And then the next board meeting is listed here. We may also have an executive session tonight. We'll just kind of have to see how that goes. So any modifications or changes to the agenda? Okay, seeing none, then we can move on to, ah, we have the land acknowledgement still here on the agenda. However, I think we are going to pause that until we have a better way to do it. I want to make sure it stays on the agenda because I think it's something that we need to keep present, front and center. But we don't want to do it wrong, so we're working on, we have a, we have an ad hoc committee working on doing it right. All right, thank you. So for community comments, community comments, we limited to no more than five minutes per person. The board requests that participants clearly state their name, place of residence, and topic of comment. The board will take no action on items raised during community comments and dialogue exchanges will be for clarification purposes, unless immediate attention is required. Actions by the school board may attend, may occur at a subsequent meeting. So are there, is there anybody here for community comments?
Hi, my name is Natalie Coppins. I live in Underhill here. My parents have been here for a long time, but we've owned properties since 2009. I graduated from MMU. And I'm going to talk about elementary school recess. It is something that I'm very passionate about. I recently found out that first graders have thirty minutes of recess a day in a six and a half hour day that's scheduled in. Some get more based on the teacher they have, but they're just scheduled for thirty-five, thirty minutes a day. And so I started to look into this. Today's the first day of sugaring, so I didn't have a lot of time because I decided to come here last minute. So I was like, you know, there's more names, but I'll be. So I looked into what the board's kind of jurisdiction is on this. And the board does seem to have a policy on nutrition and wellness in schools. And your, it says, your kind of jurisdiction, what, what the board has said is that the district shall provide other physical activity opportunities for students within or outside of the school day. Physical activities may include recess and movement built into the school day, however, it does not replace physical education. This is very vague. It gives teachers and schools a lot of autonomy to make the schedule as they like. So I wanted to make a movement to start talking about more recess for six, seven, eight year olds in schools. And I, I did a soft launch of a petition on Front Porch Forum last week. I don't know if anybody's thought here. But I got some good feedback and emails from the community, and one of them was the fact that I was reinventing the wheel. In 2016, there was already a petition submitted. It looks like it went to John Alberdi and two other people. I don't know who else. You guys have been on the board, but 2016. It had 223 supporters, parents and caregivers, and it asked them specifically, we would like to introduce sixty minutes of recess per day in a minimum, in a minimum of two outdoor recesses and hourly movement breaks in the classroom. At the beginning of the 2016-17 school year, we look forward to discussing the school and the district, discussing with the school and the district to implement this program. It was signed by many people. You can, I actually sent this in an email and maybe have to send it to everybody. I think I sent it to the board chair.
He sent it to the previous board chair, but he forwarded it to me, so I didn't get it.
I went by the website, so maybe that needs to be addressed. So this was signed by 223 supporters. And I've been doing some research and calling different principals, and I'm still waiting for some responses from them, figuring out what's going on with recess, because I heard from another set of people who contacted me, former employees and some parents, that Jericho Elementary went through this in 2018, and they asked for more recess for their kids. And they actually said that it got done. They said that their students, when they were there in 2018 in first, second grade, had two recesses. And I don't know what happened. I reached out to that principal. He said that's no longer the case. I asked for some clarifying questions. I don't know, I don't know anybody's face, but I'm trying to figure out what's going on. I'm working on my own petition. I'm waiting for some clarification from people before I send out the petition directly to all the parents in the district. But I do hope that, based on another part of your policy, where you say the board adopts that the district shall develop opportunities for family involvement in the guidance of decision making, that we can come together and you can listen to the community, and you can make some permanent and equitable changes in all the schools. Because I'm seeing a lot of differences in schools. I'm seeing differences from teacher to teacher. Some teachers like to take their kids outside. Some like to stay inside a little bit more. I think should be equal. I think should be transparent to the community. A lot of these schedules aren't available online, like teacher schedules. You have to ask for them. And, and I think that, that it should be permanent, and it shouldn't be some parent seeing these changes when their kids are in school, and then I'm reaching out and the changes are undone. So that's my follow up comment. You'll probably see me again. I'm going to be back with a petition and maybe some more parents, maybe some support will talk about this. But I'm hoping that we can add a little bit more, a little bit more instruction in our policy about physical activity and not leave it so vague, so there's not such a discrepancy from school to school, classroom to classroom. And we follow the, the research, which the previous petition was written way better than mine, and it had twenty-six well researched sources, and you can see that on the video. Want to read it if you don't know how good outdoor activity and play is for young children.
Thank you. Thank you. I think you'll be getting an email back from the administration tomorrow based from your email today, probably.
Cool. And all, all my questions.
Yeah, I asked one clarifying question that she, it's very, not going to open any digging. You said six, seven, and eight year olds, and I didn't know if you meant that or six, seventh, and eighth grade year olds.
So I'm specifically talking about elementary grade.
I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you. Any other community comments?
No.
Okay. All right, thank you. Kevin, the floor is yours.
Great, thank you. Just to introduce myself, Kevin Hamilton, principal of Browns River Middle School. Most of you know me. I've got some pieces that are new. This is my fourteenth year here, hard to believe. But I love every minute that I've been here. It's a wonderful community, and again, welcome to Browns River Middle School. It's good to see everybody here. Just to kind of go over my report a little bit, there are three hundred and sixty-seven students in Browns River Middle School right now. Population may go up a few next year. We have a small class, eighth grade class going out. It's the smallest class that I've seen had since I've been here. There's about seventy-six kids in that class, and I think we've got eighty-six coming in next year, so we should go up about ten. A few years back, we, when that class came in, we had a hundred and twenty-five that went out, so we had a fifty kid drop in that one year. So, but our population is stable and seems to be maybe just going up a little bit next year for our groups. So I just want to say that this year has been a great year. After two and a half very difficult years with all the COVID restrictions and the changes, especially at our middle school level, it was really difficult. There was a time when half of our kids were vaccinated and half of them weren't vaccinated. We were in pods still last year. We were limited on what we could do. It's hard to believe that it was only a year ago that we were still limited in pods. That kind of goes to what I want to talk a little bit about right now is our student voice in terms of our, what is called NEST, our advisory group. We wanted to start that last year. We had it all queued up to go, literally the night before, we had to shut it down because of, just in terms of where we were with COVID restrictions, because we were mixing up our kids into multi-grade level groups. So we have, we are meeting once a week with our students in small groups. That's called NEST again. This is a group of teachers that got together in the summer of 2021 to create this. Nest is, comes from that we're the Raiders, the bird, and that's our nest. So just to give you the origin of that is where we, we came up with that. And our groups are called flocks, so we are in flocks of about nine or ten, and it's fifth through eighth grade students in the groups. And we are, this year, our focus is on getting to know each other and reconnecting as a community. Really disconnected quite a bit over the last few years. I was, I've been able to sub in a lot of the different nests and not realizing how much our kids didn't know each other, didn't know who they were, didn't know names. And, you know, there was some differences with the grade levels and everything, but we were really disconnected as a group. And this year, we're really using this vehicle to help rebuild our community and our culture. Our, our culture really disappeared for two and a half years, our traditions, our, all those things. So within this advisory group, the NEST, we are, this year again, we're focusing on our, just getting to know each other as community team building. We're going to start building on topics as we move through. We want to include the community in our discussions on things, include parents on it. We're going to be talking about equity. We're going to be talking about diversity with these groups. And everybody's doing the same thing in the pod or in the flock that they're in, so we have slides. Every, if you would walk into every flock, they'll be doing the same thing every day. There may be a little variety because they do a little, some fun activities after discussion at the beginning of a targeted discussion. So we're really excited about it, some great results, some great connections with our adults, with kids they don't normally meet as well. And just kids connecting across grade levels, which we haven't seen in, in two and a half years, so it's really nice. And we're really, really excited about it and moving forward with that. So that's where we're really connecting as a community. Just to talk a little bit about our progress on our district priorities. We are continuing to use our early release days and our, our after-school meetings with our teachers to really talk about our curriculum, to coordinate across math, science, social studies, ELA. We are working closely with Campbell's Hump Middle School as well, so our coaches, our district coaches, which are, have been fantastic for us. We have four coaches that are helping us in ELA, math, science, and social studies. They're helping to coordinate with our curriculum, but also they're getting into classrooms and seeing what's going on. They're shared across the districts. They're in classrooms in Campbell's Hump, but they're in classrooms in our school as well, so they can see, they can compare, they can help us align. And again, a lot of that work is being done on those early release days. We also meet after school as well and during the school day as well. So those coaches are really important and vital to us as, as a community, as a teaching school, or as a teaching community. Our, continue to work with our anti-bias, anti-racist work with our committee. Bringing that back from Dr. Lival Brown, the work that they, they do with that committee, and that's brought back into our school over the Martin Luther King Weekend on our Monday that we had in service. We looked at the characteristics of dominant culture, had some really rich discussion about that as a community, and really are bringing that and embedding that into our discussion, and also bringing that back into our classrooms in order to be equitable and to diverse and really taking a look at who we are as a community and really doing a lot of work in those areas. Student engagement, this is one of the amazing things that I love about Browns River Middle School is the amount of kids that are participating in activities. We are probably at ninety, ninety-five percent, if not more, of our kids that are participating in one sort of activity or another. We have such a variety of options for our kids to come in. This library, I like to say, is one of the noisiest libraries around. There, it is a hub of activity. Nicole Thompson does in November what's called Non-Rhino. You might see that on here. It's National Novel Writers Month for November, National, I forget. Let me try that again. National November Writers Month is what it is. And there's probably about sixty or seventy kids in here writing, and they do that for the entire month of November. It's pretty amazing to see that we're writing, getting kids in there. We have, then we're across the hall. On the same time, we have Dungeons and Dragons going on. There's about thirty kids in there making a bunch of noise in there and having a great time. We have engineering club. We have Lego club. We have the athletics that are going as well. Our sports are pretty, are amazingly well attended by our kids, and participation with our kids. There's a variety of activities from volleyball to basketball to, I don't know, cross, field hockey, soccer, baseball, softball. So a huge number of kids are participating in that. We do create clubs that are based on kids' interests as well. So we have the Rubik's Cube Club back. Yep, it's back. After the eighties, the kids are, I can't believe how many Rubik's Cubes are in my hallways during the day. It's pretty incredible. They are, and they're really good at it, better than I ever was as a kid back in the eighties, and pretty incredible. So our music group is incredible, the amount of participation. If you come in our hallways here, as I said, in the right up here, we don't have enough space for the amount of kids that we have playing music. We have kids playing violin in the hallways, in the lunchroom. If we could get an auditorium, it'd be great. But it's just an amazing, Berta Frank and Victoria Rosales, our former student here, is now back teaching. Just on incredible programs. We have some string coaches. I think we have sixty kids in strings that are playing strings right now. Pretty amazing.
That's great, because that was a disaster here fifteen years ago.
There were probably, for our five, six concerts, I think we estimated there were six hundred people in our gym to watch the concert. And there was probably three, three hundred in the, in the seven, eight concert as well. So it was just pretty incredible to come. If you want to come and see a show, it's pretty amazing to see. And the amazing part, it wasn't a squeak or a squelch anyway. It was just incredible to see the talent and the work that they've done. And just an amazing array of.
Your ninety percent participation rate, is that like?
That's looking at all.
At some point during the year?
Yeah, at some point during the year.
So if I just played soccer and then nothing else, I'm in the ninety percent?
But most of our kids are doing something else.
Oh, I get it. So they have, they have like, they have a, they have a peer group.
They have a place, yeah. We're trying to rebuild our drama program. That was a big of a hit for us. Dave Tisdale retired during, at the end of COVID. He had run a program. We're slowly rebuilding that. We do have a drama production that's going to happen in March, so we're excited to be able to use our stage again. We put a lot of money into that. If you haven't seen our stage, it looks beautiful up there with the curtains and the lighting and the sound. It's pretty amazing, so we're really excited to slowly build our drama program back. So there will be a production that's happening at the end of March. So again, really coming back, and as I said, it's just really feels good this year to be back. Penguin plunge, I always put, put the plug in for that. Unfortunately, it was negative twenty-five on the day that they were supposed to go in the water, but they raised fifteen thousand dollars. We are planning on Thursday before break, they have a slip and slide out back that we're going to have kids do that in front of our kids. So we're going to do a penguin slide across the snow. We're going to do it safely, but we want to be able to build up that energy on that. We also have, you know, one of the other traditions we had was the Spectrum Sleepout. We raised about fifteen thousand dollars last year as a community. So the kids are building a community outside of the community too, and really participating. You know, the Spectrum Sleepout is more than just sleeping out. There's a lot of discussion about it. There's a lot of awareness that's raised. Kids talk about it. They do come in pretty tired the next day. Some of our staff come in pretty tired, but then we talk about, can you imagine having to do this all the time, you know, that struggle? So it creates quite a bit of awareness for our kids and the needs that are out there as a community. So again, just really great to get back to the routines of Browns River Middle School. We've got some new traditions that we've added too. We have Hour of Fun that Rebecca Marsh has introduced. So eighth grade, we've done, in seventh and eighth grade, we introduced that as, as that, we've just done it once so far that there's adults that have specific interests that they'll do. The kids sign up for these small groups. We had Coco and Cards, so our new art teacher was doing some Coco and Cards in their, their art room. Again, I'll put in a plug for Franny Willard, one of our new art teachers is just amazing. Walk around the building and see the art if you want to do that tonight. It's pretty incredible. So we're excited about Franny, and so Hour Fun is a new tradition. So we, you know, we did away with some old things. We brought in some new things. We kept some things that were working. Our traffic flow during COVID, we really worked on, and that's really helped us. You'll see, there's a one way on the stairs. Before it was like eighth graders coming down, fifth graders coming up, and it was really difficult. We've continued with that flow, and it's just really nice, especially for our fifth graders who are coming up and, you know, there's a six foot person coming down, and they're not, not quite as big, and so it's just nice to do that. Our kids may not agree with the one way all the time, but that's okay. And BRAG, our community parent group, continues to be an active group with us. We meet monthly. They continue to support us in many ways, and fundraising, they connect with us. They help us out with a lot of our activities. They sponsor the five, six party that goes on, which is, it's a party that happens after school two times a year for our fifth and sixth graders. They have a DJ there, no slow dancing, only the, the fast dancing. They have games going on. It's pretty wild and crazy, but they have a great time. So again, BRAG really helps us out with all of those kind of activities, and we're really connected with them. It's also a good way to connect with our parents as the administrators, to let them know what's going on in their school. So that's my report. Questions?
Questions, Kevin. Here. Back to your flocks.
Yes.
You said that the groups are five to eight. It's not, it's not just fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade?
Yeah, so there's about two kids per grade level in the flock, yeah.
So right at Campbell's Hump, it's strictly by grade, the way they're doing the advisory over there. Do you find that the flocks having it span all grade levels, like, takes away some of the weirdness of being a middle schooler, right? Like you were just saying, with a fifth and eighth grader, right, can be super intimidating, right? If you're in a flock with them.
I'm going to be from the fifty-six year old guy. Yeah, it looks like that, right? For me, it feels like that. And, but the interesting thing is to see some of our younger kids who may be a little more vocal, and they take a leadership role. And so, you know, middle school developmentally, it's so across the board, so it's really neat to, and as I've said, I've had the opportunity to go into different groups, because when there's someone out, I kind of float. And just to see, and, and usually there's someone there who is a little more outgoing. And if they're, if they're missing, it's a different group. The dynamic is a different group. So I think, yeah, and that's what we really want to do, and what I encourage kids, because when I first went in, I said, okay, so has anybody said hi to anybody in this group? And they're all kind of looking at me like, you know, not unsure about it. So that's what I've been encouraging people to do, to say hi to each other outside of the flock. So again, we've, we've only had about sixteen, maybe more than that now, but, so we're still building on getting to know each other. So, but I think it has, from what I can see, especially within those groups, you can see the connections being made.
Yeah, I just wonder, like, some of the eighth graders taking on fifth graders as a mentor, right? Like, walking into a building and you know somebody, and like, that's a safe person. Understand, like, that's a safe space where, you know, maybe the sixth grader and the eighth grader are having the same issue, and they can have that conversation and kind of help everybody to feel included and safe in that group.
And that's our goal. That is absolutely our goal. We definitely saw that disconnect with, and especially after COVID, that it was a really huge disconnect there. So, I mean, I think it's always, from my perspective, again, it's always been a safe place, but I don't, they weren't connected, right? It's really, so that's what we really want to do, is build that connection, the bigger community. So, and I've seen that in some relationships in the hallways, you know. And as I said, developmentally, you know, we can have a sixth grader that may be more, more confident than an eighth grader, and that, you know. So middle school, it's just across the board, just stuff, so. And that's why we love, that's why I love.
Thank you. Do you have a question?
I want to thank you for.
Go ahead.
Focusing on the six district priorities here in your, you know, in your report, it's really helpful to kind of see it in one place and to recognize that that's kind of what it is. Could you talk a little bit about the, you know, your MTSS program and, you know, kind of how it's going? And also, you know, what you're working on, what are you trying to improve with it right now?
So with the MTSS, the interesting thing, we've been, we just had an administrative discussion about this. A lot, a lot of things, you know, it's kind of this big word, there are big acronym that's kind of put on it. We've already been doing a lot of this stuff as, as it is, and we're just kind of identifying it now and trying to structure it a little bit more and have those discussions about it. You know, there's, there's the three tiers, right? I'm not sure how familiar with, I, I was talking to John before. I'm not sure how much people wanted to rehash MTSS, but there's the three tiers, you know, there's the first instruction. There's the follow-up tier two, and then there's the three, the tier three, the intervention part, right? And so we're really starting to structure that a little bit more. That guiding coalition is talking about that. We're trying to pull that back to the teachers, so there's the guiding coalition. We're talking about the, the structures. We're also trying to coordinate across the district in terms of interventions, coordinating those kind of things in terms of what are the right interventions for the right grade level and things like that. So, so that's the work that we're doing right now. We're also really looking, not just at the academic part, but the SEL part, the social and emotional learning. That, that's, for me, that's the, the big thing that we really need to work on for our students is, you know, I just had a meeting with a fifth grade team today, and developmentally where they're at compared to where they could be or should be. Their, their executive functioning, so their skills, you know, transferable student skills and stuff like that are, are behind, you know, and.
Can you give some examples?
You know, I, I think in terms of, so what we're talking about today is when there's, there's a classroom, okay? And kids shooting out, you know, things that, that thought bubble things that they're shooting out, trying to get attention a little bit more. Not in a bad way. As I said, these kids are, they're great kids. They just, they're in the moment, and they haven't learned that skill of, okay, let's, I mean, I don't have to throw that out right now. I have to raise my hand to candidate, you know, so there's, there's a cohesive discussion. So there's a lot of pop-cording going on that we're doing, and we're trying to, we brought Joelle, Joelle Van Lenten, who's our district psychologist, who kind of consults with us, and she's seeing the same thing across, you know, and she works with other schools. And it's a very similar kind of thing. She came in and looked at that. So what we're going to focus on for this classroom is, you know, those, those classroom management type things. In order to get to the instruction is really the work that we're really looking at. That's, for me, that's the big part right now, is getting that part of it. That being said, we're looking at those three tiers as well and trying to structure those a little bit more. A lot of ways that we've already been doing a lot of that stuff. We're just trying to be a little bit more coordinated with it. Schedules are really hard in terms of that intervention piece, because there's just so much stuff going on with our schedule and stuff and the, and the amount of day, the offerings that we have for kids. So trying to get the intervention stuff without taking them out of first instruction is key, and just trying to get to the kids is really the hard part.
Do you have like a benchmark or a goal in terms of on the academic side between identification for the need for intervention, intervention, and then, and then the intervention itself? Is there like a timeline that you try to, a rule of thumb?
So there's like a six-week cycle that we kind of look through, is what we do. We do that intervention check and then see where we're at. And so it's targeted intervention is what we're looking at. So we're trying to target the intervention on the need. And then you look at a six-week window, and then you kind of try to reassess after that and see if there's.
At the point of first identification?
Okay.
Do you have a goal in terms of when the intervention begins?
We have, no, I wouldn't say that we've identified that, so not a specific goal on that. We meet weekly with our team teachers, and we talk about kids in that meeting, so there's a regular conversation going on. So I wouldn't say there's a, a target window on that. But we're talking about kids weekly with, you know, so we are, so let's say Team Explorer, we're meeting with the two teachers. There's a guidance counselor in that meeting. There's the special educator, myself, and we're talking about kids and performances.
You're in those meetings?
Yeah, yes, I'm in those meetings, yeah.
What is the, last question, what is the guiding coalition?
So it's a group of teachers that representative across, and we're talking about, that's building. It's kind of guiding what we're doing in terms of that, the MTSS work, in terms of going that way and bringing that discussion back to our, our classroom teachers. So there's a core group of teachers. There's, there's special educators on the guiding coalition. There's, there might be a PE teacher. There's EXP teachers. There's the core teachers.
What odds are there's at least one person from that in the.
That's, that's the goal, yes. And so we can, yes, so it trickles down from there, right? I don't want to use trickle, but it, it spreads out from there, yes.
I don't think Kevin under, I think you might not have understood part of your question. When we, we do have grade level proficiencies, so if kids are meeting, you know, a grade level proficiency in reading or math, you know, those are the benchmarks we use to say, okay, do they need to be in tier, you know, two or tier one, tier two or tiers three?
Right. I mean, we've heard many descriptions of the MTSS.
And we're going to have more because Mary's here tonight, so.
Yeah, and one of them talked about, you know, sort of getting help quicker as opposed to the end of the semester. Yeah, and one of them talked about sort of getting help quicker as opposed to the end of the semester, at, at the end of the grading period.
Yeah, and that, that's happening. We're, we're not waiting, like we're identifying kids. You had asked if there's a specific timeline, I guess is what I was looking at. So yeah, we're identifying kids immediately and then responding to it immediately.
Well, I guess that's the answer.
Yeah, so, so if there's, so they're doing formative assessments on things. If there's a, there's an area that, that the student, you know, was, was a little, didn't have quite enough skills then there'll be, there'll be some intervention or re, re, re-instruction in that area to kind of do that. So that's guided on that formative assessments that go on. So the teachers do a formative assessment, check things, check in, and then there's re-teaching or then we identify if there's an intervention that's needed as well.
Do you still have a question?
If there's time.
Sure.
I might have two.
John only gave me fifteen minutes.
So I said if there's.
It was on me, Finn.
Well, first of all, Kevin, thank you for a really good report. Great to read, even better to hear you, you know, present, present it to us. And you seem to, you know, know everything that's going on in the school. There was a lot, a lot of positive in your report. And, and maybe you, you touched briefly on things where you, you see opportunities. But could you just maybe highlight those again for me, like areas where you, you think you're struggling to do what you want to get done? And where you're, what are your?
Are you talking from a kid level or from an?
Floor is yours.
What's that? The floor is mine. From a kid level, as I said, you know, we are, we are rebuilding, right? I, I think we're rebuilding a, a, a school. You know, we have new teachers here that, that do not, that, that were not here pre-COVID, right? We hired them and so they're not used to the routines, which is a, which is a challenge, but also a benefit too. They can bring in some new ideas and stuff like that. So, so, you know, from a kid level, we're, we're rebuilding, right? And we're rebuilding their skills that they may miss, be missing from social skills, that those interactions with peers. You know, there's been a lot of, you know, online communication with kids and stuff like that, which as a middle school principal, I do not encourage a whole lot. It, it's, it's a challenge. But that was, that's what I would say from, from a kid level, right? Is that those, those interactions with each other and, and, and the executive functioning skills and stuff. And, and that's what I would say. Our younger, I, I'm noticing a little bit more lunchroom. We took a long time to get settled in into the, these kids had not been in a lunchroom together for two and a half years. They had been separated. So we had already, all of a sudden, we put them in a hundred and they hadn't practiced. So a lot of practicing routines and stuff like that. From a logistical standpoint, as I said, I, I think scheduling is, is a challenge in terms of just the amount of stuff. One that we have to, I like to say it's a, it's, it's a good problem to have, but it's also a challenging problem to have. You know, we have, we have times that, you know, we can get to kids, but it may be during band or maybe during chorus or maybe at different times where, and we try to avoid that at all costs, you know? And so we got to talk to families about what's the priority, you know? And, and so we really have to work really hard and come up with some ways to be creative around that. So we do want to build in the schedule, specific time for intervention where kids aren't going anywhere. So they're not getting pulled out of things that, that are, that are, that are their strengths, right? You know, and so that's the challenge, I would say, is that, you know, you, you know, a kid struggles with reading and we're saying, okay, you gotta miss band because you gotta, you watch or read more. Well, that doesn't really instill them for a love of reading if they really love band. So that's the challenge.
Give back a little more time in the day.
Right. Yeah.
And, and just to move, another question.
Go ahead.
EBGRs in high school, you know, I think are still like a poor concept when eighth graders go to high school. At least that's what I'm sensing in my family. Is that, is that okay? Or do you see maybe an opportunity to flow those down or that concept of performance based over how the current grading system is?
So yes, I think there's an opportunity to flow those down more, especially as we're coming out of this and having some more discussions around that in terms of those, those transitions to high school. We, Mike and Gretchen and I were just talking about some transition opportunities a couple of weeks ago and how do we look at those again, you know, make some changes, make some positive changes around transition, helping our kids to be ready a little bit more as they move into high school. I just had, we actually just had some, some seniors in the high school, from the high school that were down here last week. But they were also kind of following up on some things. I talked to them about the transition from high school to, to, or from middle school to high school. What was the challenges and stuff? And workload was one of the things that they talked a lot about. So how do we prepare them for that as well? So that was one of the things they talked about. And prioritizing is kind of what, you know, if you're doing a lot of activities, how do you make sure your work's getting done? And balancing everything out. Okay. We are, the PLPs, we are starting to really to rev those up a little bit again. What Mike Weston really wants us to talk about is goal setting, SMART goals. But we're also kind of building in some things around career, not, not deciding your career, just exploration of things and stuff as well. So there's that PLP process that we're trying to rely on.
PLP?
Personalized learning plan.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here, appreciate the detailed dive in. All right, we will move on to, we, we will give you plenty of time, Mary. Don't, don't feel rushed here. So let's move to the special services information and updates. Turn the floor over to you, Mary.
Thanks, Edie.
Thanks.
Should I share my screen?
Sure, that would be great.
Okay.
Looks good.
Okay. Hi, everyone. I'm Mary Lundine and I am the Director of Special Services. It's nice to be here tonight. So I'm just going to give you an update on what's happening and, and then I'll answer any questions that you have. So I just wanted to review with you just our child count data and show you how many students we have who are eligible for special education. And so you can see over the last five years that our numbers have remained pretty steady. So when we did our child count in December of 2022, which is when we report to the Vermont Agency of Education, we had three hundred and ninety-four students who were eligible for special education. So looking at last year as compared to this year, that was an increase of about ten students. And breaking it down, we have thirty students eligible who are at the pre-K age. So that would be three to five years old. At the elementary, we have a hundred and thirty-five. Middle school has a hundred and three. And the high school has a hundred and twenty-three students eligible. This slide is just showing you the percentage based on our total enrollment. So last year, we saw that we had fourteen point five percent of our total enrollment was eligible for special education. And you can see that that was a slight dip last year. And one of the reasons that we're thinking is that we were in the hybrid learning model where students came to school for several days to get in-person instruction and then they were doing some online learning. We had a lot of students whose families chose for them to just do their education last year through the Vermont, the VTVLC, which was the Vermont Learning Cooperative, which was online. And so there may not have been as many requests for special education evaluations. So this year, we have, as you can see, we have an uptick. So this year, sixteen percent of our total enrollment is eligible for special education. That is within the state average, which is, the last time they did the average for the state was in 2020. And at that time, the state average was fifteen point four percent. I suspect that it probably is sixteen, seventeen percent now. So we are well within the state average. So the next slide is looking at just a five-year picture of our out-of-district placements. And what that means is students that we would tuition outside the district who may need to go to a special program that, that could be located in Burlington, it could be outside Chittenden County. So those are school, schools and decisions that IEP teams would make. So this year, we have nineteen students that are in out-of-district placements. And that's an increase of about three students over what we had last year. We have had quite a few students moving in from out of state, which has contributed to that. So you can also see by looking at that graph that the high school bar, which is the yellow bar, that we have more students this year that are high school age than middle school age. And it was just some of the middle school students moving into high school. So reasons for out-of-district placements. What IEP teams need to do is when they meet to develop the student's IEP. And those meetings need to occur once a year. They can happen more often. Families can request meetings more often, the teachers can. But they are required at least once a year to meet and develop the plan. And so part of the discussion when you're developing an IEP is you look at what's called present levels of performance. So you gather all of the information about the child's current circumstances. You look at their functional performance, you're looking at their academic performance. You're looking at behavior data. And so with that information, the team will develop goals and objectives that are specific to the child's disability. And then they need to talk about services. So what are the services that the student will need to help them make meaningful progress on those goals and objectives that have been created? And when they talk about the services and the accommodations, they need to think about where is the least restrictive environment that that is going to happen? And so what that means is the, the federal law, the spirit of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, which is the federal special ed law, was that all students with disabilities would be educated in the public school that they would attend if they did not have disabilities. So that was the spirit of the law back in seventy-four. Part of that was Congress understood at the time that some students, that the public school would not be enough for them based on the needs that they had. And so that's why they put that provision in the law that said that schools would need to look outside the district if the school could not meet all of the needs that had been identified by the IEP team. So what we always do is we look at what can we do in our building? And we, and the goal is always that you're trying to keep students in the public school. But sometimes if they have aggressive behavior, where it's not safe for them to be in school, because they may get hurt or somebody else may get hurt, you have to have this conversation. And so the team would be looking at behavior data and looking at a more therapeutic program that can really support the student in terms of ratio of adults to student. Other students, it may be that they have some generalized anxiety or depression. So they're dealing with some mental health issues that they physically can't enter the school or they're really struggling to access their education in the classroom. And so again, the team may need to look and say, okay, where is there a smaller therapeutic program that has the mental health thread that can support that student throughout the day? So these are the kinds of conversations that happen. It is not me making the decision. It's not the principals or the parent alone. This is a team discussion and a team going through that process to determine if this is necessary. So I just wanted to just review with you just some of the things. People are always wondering why special education budgets are high or why they continue to rise. And I think it's really important to understand what are those cost drivers? So we all know that mental health needs and services are really falling on schools right now. Our mental health agencies are experiencing significant staffing issues. And they are not able to meet the needs of a lot of children. We have heard stories of kids sitting in the ER who cannot get emergency beds or assessment beds. There are no residential programs available. So there's a lot that is missing in terms of how to support people with their mental health needs. So, so the school is really trying to meet those needs by consulting with outside experts, by hiring social workers and behavior interventionists and contracting with our mental health provider for some services. We've just talked about the out-of-district tuition cost and associated transportation. So for instance, if we have a student whose placement may be in Montpelier, that student would need to travel to and from Montpelier. So that's a transportation cost. The other thing would be looking just at contracts that we have with outside providers. So we contract with many outside providers. So the Vermont Association for the Blind and Visually Impaired. We contract with the Vermont I-Team. We contract with agencies that provide us with behavior interventionist and board-certified behavior analyst to help with some of the students with more significant autism. We also need to consult. Sometimes if students have needs around a communication device, then we would work with someone who has that area of expertise and can help us figure out what's the appropriate communication device and how do you run the trial and train the staff? So contracted services is always a big line item in the special education budget. And then, of course, we have our personnel that are necessary to deliver the specialized instruction and related services. And we have really kept, we have not been adding a lot of new staff to our special education budget. This year, we have only added one point five FTEs. So the current challenges, I, I just shared that with you about our local mental health agency, that they are experiencing significant staffing shortages and don't have the resources to support all of the mental health needs that we currently have. We also are having some difficulty with some of the out-of-district programs, the schools that I mentioned earlier where we would tuition students. So this year, when we started school in August, we had three students who were supposed to attend an out-of-district program. And the program called us the week before school was to start to let us know that they had half the staff that they had had in the spring when they had accepted students for the fall and that they were not going to be able to serve students. And so we, we. And so we, we had to figure out for those three students what we were going to do. And I think, you know, it was great teamwork between the middle school helping to problem solve as well as the high school staff and Blythe and me. And we all just put our heads together to figure out how to meet the needs of those students until we could get them into another out-of-district placement. But that is a challenge across the state of Vermont. Every district is facing that challenge right now. And then I think this is news that we're all very well aware of. Across the country as well as in Vermont, there are less and less applicants for special education positions. So school psychologists, special educators, speech-language pathologists. It's really, really challenging to hire applicants for those positions. And then I think the other big challenge coming out of the pandemic, as Kevin was really speaking to earlier, is just the number of students with challenging behavior and trauma. And the pandemic definitely had an impact on a lot of kids. But we're also seeing more developmental trauma that's related to the opioid crisis that, that nationally we've experienced. And so we are starting to see some of the children that were born addicted and how that has impacted them. So Vermont Act 173, this, we've talked about this in the past. And I know Andrew has also talked about this. This law went into effect this past July. And the guiding principle of Act 173 is that all students are general education students first. And so that has been the, at the forefront of the work that Andrew and I are doing together. We are thinking about all kids. And we are combining our expertise to figure out what does our MTSS structure look like for Mount Mansfield? And so as Kevin mentioned, we've done a lot of work with Tier One. We've been working with our schools to get their guiding coalitions up and running. Andrew and I have been meeting with all of the interventionists in our district. We meet with them monthly. And we've been talking a lot about your question, Chuck, that you asked earlier. How will we know when students need intervention? And so what we're really trying to do is identify what those universal screeners will be that students will take in the fall? And what's the data that we'll look at from the spring to identify the students that will be on an interventionist caseload? And we will be identifying what are those evidence-based programs that we will be using for Tier Three? How long would a student be in Tier Three? So these are the questions we're working on together. And then the, the last part of Act 173 is that we moved from a reimbursement model for special education to a census block grant. So instead of us getting a 56% reimbursement for every dollar that we spent, now we're given a census block grant. And once we've met all of the special education needs in the district, we have some flexibility in how we can use our special education staff and resources to serve other students who are not on IEPs. And then just wrapping up the discussion around the benefits of a multi-tiered system of support, what our goal really is, is that all of the instruction and the core curriculum will be designed thinking about all students. And that's what universal design for learning is. You design your lesson, your units of study. You have the supports and the scaffolds already in place so that everybody can access their learning. And then the, the guiding principle is that all students will be general education students first. Every single student will receive high-quality first instruction from a skilled professional, which is the classroom teacher. So what that means for students with disabilities is they would not be receiving instruction from a para, their core instruction. They would not be receiving their core instruction from a special educator. It would be from a highly qualified classroom teacher. And the other piece that Kevin mentioned earlier is students will not be pulled from their core instruction, that first core instruction. And so what we need to look at is when we're designing the master schedule is really thinking about what's the core time? And how do we build in some blocks of time for students who need intervention? Or students who are receiving their special education services? How does that get built in? So nobody misses their core time. This is my last slide. And this is just looking back at the last three years. So I'm in my third year in the district. And so just looking back, one of my priorities also is literacy. And that's a district priority. And we have done a lot of literacy professional development in K-8. So with that, I mean, special educators getting trained in the science of reading, learning the Orton-Gillingham program and doing that training. So really deepening their knowledge of literacy and what are the appropriate evidence-based strategies, approaches, programs that we can use for kids who have reading disabilities? Andrew and I have been working very, very closely for the past two years around the MTSS work. We work with the principals. We work with the coaches. We have been working with the interventionist. I've been talking to the special educators about this. So it's a lot of systems work. But I think we have really made a lot of, we've got a lot of momentum and we've done a lot of good work considering we've had some challenges with the pandemic. We changed our model last year. It used to be that all of the special educators were responsible for doing a special education eval on students. So if it was a student that somebody had a concern about and it was the first time, we would assign a special educator. If it was a student who was up for their three-year, three-year reevaluation, the special educator who had that student on their caseload would have to do it. That is very, very time-consuming to do a full special education evaluation. There is the, all of the meetings. There's the assessments. There's scoring the assessments. There's writing the reports. There's collecting all the data. And so what we decided is we would take two of our existing special educators and we would have them be the coordinators of that process. And they would be the leads and take that off the plate of our other special educators so that they were available to, to work with kids more. Because that's really what we want. Them providing, providing instruction, consulting with classroom teachers and working with students. We, this year, we have done a lot of training in the new Vermont special education rules. And we have a few more rules that'll be coming this July. So I'm planning already for August for our in-service and getting that ready for people for when they come back. And we have done training in universal design for learning. For pre-K, which I also oversee, we have really focused on the last two years to help our pre-K teachers understand early literacy and early math. So we've done some work looking at the pre-K, the early ed standards and looking at some of those early skills. So for literacy, just understanding that books, you open a book, you go left-to-right orientation, you know, just things like that that are really critical for foundational skills for literacy. And then we've also really started to focus on nature-based learning. And so how do we take our early literacy and our early math? And we're embedding it into nature-based learning? Because we really believe that kids need to be outside. And I always enjoy visiting the outdoor classrooms because for me, I, I never know who is a child that has an IEP, who is a child that might have some challenges. I can't tell when they're outside and everyone's engaged. And it's just wonderful to see. So we have spent a lot of time on that. And I'm ready to answer any questions that you have. I'm gonna stop sharing my screen so I can see you.
Great. So if anyone has a question, if you're online, pop your hand up. If you're in the room, give me a hand. I wrote down a couple of questions, but I'm gonna field from other folks first.
Hi, Mary. Thank you so much for that presentation. I always love hearing about all of the support and good work that is happening. I'm curious to learn more about the out-of-district placement. I understand completely what you're talking about. But can you give examples of the actual locations where students are going? Because that's just the one piece that's running me from really wrapping my head around it.
So, so what the team needs to do? So the team would not choose the placement, the out-of-district program or school. That would be the LEA, which is me, or if the principal is serving in the LEA. So what the team needs to do is, is they need to identify what needs does the student have that can't be met, let's say, at Browns River? So let's just use an example. So if we have a student who has an emotional disability. And so an emotional disability means that students may be experiencing, it could be an underlying mental health issue. It could be that they just really have some developmental trauma and they have a really hard time regulating their emotions and maybe keeping a calm body. And so the team has looked at what are all of the things that we've tried while that student's been at Browns River? So the student has worked with the special educator. They may have had some pullout, pulling them into a quiet space if they need to just, you know, regulate and work on some calming strategies. We may have contracted with a BI from an outside agency, which that person acts as a one-on-one. And their goal is to run the behavior plan that the board-certified behavior specialist would have identified that really is targeted to what that student needs to work on. And then if the team was meeting and really looking at the data and saying, there's still a lot of aggression. The student, you know, is hurting people or hurting themselves. And they are out of the classroom like 60% of the day. At that point, the team really needs to say, is that student really accessing their education at Browns River? Or is it that they need something more therapeutic? Such as, and I'm just gonna name a school, but it doesn't mean that that would be the one. Such as the Baird School in Burlington, which is run by Howard Mental Health. And the, what that program offers that would look different than us is they usually have a special educator and a general educator that team. And they have no more than eight students in the classroom. And they use the circle of courage. And they use, they run like behavior plans for the class, but they also have individual behavior plans. And then the academics is more specialized instruction than, than general ed being grade-level standards. But that would be the conversation that the team might have saying, well, that's where they need to go. So there are a lot of programs in Chittenden County that are out-of-district programs. We have Belkate that serves children with emotional disabilities and autism. The Howard Center runs the Baird School. They also are connected with the Garvin Consortium. There is Center Point. They run a program. New School of Montpelier works with students with emotional disabilities and autism. There's programs up in the St. Aubin's area, Project SOAR. So the team really needs to pinpoint what are the concerns and what does the student need? And then the, the LEA, which would be me or the principal, is looking at what school has openings? What's the proximity of the school? Because you don't, again, you don't wanna put students in a van and have them traveling for an hour if there's someplace closer. So there's a lot that goes into that. And the parents and the IEP team are included in the discussion, but the final decision rests with the LEA.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Kevin, you had a question?
Yeah. Mary, on your work with pre-K, does that extend into the private partnerships as well? Or is your focus on the pre-K that the district is providing?
So it's, it's not with the, the private providers. This is work that we've been doing with our district. We have, Andrew and Kyle and I have been talking about some of the MTSS work and thinking about the social-emotional learning piece and, and maybe inviting some of our private provider partners to join in on some of the social-emotional learning PD that we may be doing since students are then feeding into our system. But Saxon Hill is right in the UID building. And they already have a big play-based program. So, you know, that, that's just not something that we've done. I think it's just been really looking at the, the classrooms within the district.
We do serve AAA students in other programs. Like the identification, the early identification, is it harder or less likely in the private providers than in public?
No, we get, so that's called Child Find. And so what happens is when zero to three, so birth to three, if a child is identified by their pediatrician or let's say, parents have a concern that a two-year-old isn't talking and they can make a referral to what's called CIS. And that's the Coordinated Intervention Service. So that's through the Agency of Human Services. They oversee zero to three. When the child is two and a half, that organization will contact our school district and say, we have a two-and-a-half-year-old that's gonna be turning three that will be coming to you. So we start having meetings so that we're ready. And then we pick up when the child turns three. Any three-year-olds in our district within our boundaries, if a parent has a concern, whether the child's at Saxon Hill, Poker Hill, Tiny Tots in Richmond, the, all the directors and the teachers know if there's a concern, they can call our district. And we bring the team together to discuss the concern and decide if we're gonna move forward with an evaluation. So that is a federal provision in IDEA and it is called Child Find that we are responsible for.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Are, Mary, are children on free and reduced lunch typically in the state more likely to have an IEP?
Yes. I, I have worked in a high-poverty district. And that was something that we did see. And a lot of times, it tended to be in the area of speech and language. We would see a lot of that. And other times, it was some cognitive delays in the young children. But, but the highest category was speech and language.
So we have one-third as many kids on free and reduced lunch as the state average. So you would think that our percentage of children on IEP would be lower than the state average in that case. Do you have any kind of ideas on why it's so high compared to what you might expect?
I think when I look at the, the number of kids that are eligible, what, some of the things that we have been talking about is lack of instruction. So coming out of the pandemic, there has been a significant increase in request for special ed evaluations.
It's true in all of this.
Yeah, yeah. And-
Relative to our poverty rate.
Yeah, so I, I don't know the answer to that question. All I know is when someone has a concern, we will bring the group together and we go through the process. And it's the assessments that answer the question.
And one thing I was, it looks like it's kind of the same percentage of children across all the elementary, middle school and high school. I was kind of expecting that it would go down, that we were kind of more active early on with the hope of fewer children needing the services later. Is this, is this tend to be the same individuals for all 13 years? Or are some of the, or is there a big new increases at a certain point? I mean, I just, I was expecting that there would be fewer children in, at MMU than in the younger grades, but I guess not.
So I think sometimes what happens when, when students are in middle school, we will get requests. The student may not have been on an IEP all along. And we may get requests. And a lot of times, it can be, well, what's been showing up more is concerns around anxiety and depression. And so we will go through the special ed evaluation. And students are interviewed, families are interviewed. There are checklists that are filled out. And there has definitely been an increase in that. So those students would be eligible under the category of other health impairment. Or it could also fall under an emotional disability if there were some other things going on. The other disability category that seems to crop up in middle school and high school, the question is, does my child have ADHD? So that's another one that will come up. And sometimes it's the pediatrician who's diagnosing that. And the family would be bringing a letter from the doctor, which then we would start the evaluation and go through the process and use the information from the doctor to determine eligibility. So those are two categories that seem to show up, not so much in the younger children, but in older kids.
Is this consistent across Vermont? That's kind of a pretty similar percent-
Yeah.
All the grades?
I think so, yes.
The last question is if, you know, in terms of like the, the out of, I'd like to learn more about the out-of-district placement also. If, if, if MMU and CVU and Essex and South Burlington and Burlington are, you know, say, a, a number of schools in, in Chittenden County or in our region wanted to work together, what, what do you think that might, what comes first to mind at the idea of, of sort of a broader multi-district view on this? What, what do you think might be accomplished?
I think it's a great idea. The Garvin Consortium is exactly that. It was school districts coming together and working with Howard Mental Health to create the Garvin Consortium. So when you look at the tuition for Garvin, it is much less than some of the other programs. And the districts make decisions about what the curriculum and the structure of the program's going to look like. We have talked about, the directors in the districts have talked about that very idea. The problem would be no one would want to oversee the program. Like a district wouldn't want to take that on, managing the financial piece as well as the oversight. And so we have said, you know, should we just replicate the, the Garvin model and do something similar like that? I think we need, we definitely need something for younger kids. And then that's always tricky when you look at what's available. There's not a lot out there. And I think there's also, also the whole philosophical thing where people don't really want to send elementary children out of district.
So could, could you picture a bunch of schools in Chittenden County running a therapeutic program or school?
I think they could create a consortium, yeah.
This is where I think the state could help. And I'll just leave it at that, some facilitating, which I've said before.
Isn't it helping a little bit with the block grant in giving us flexibility?
I think that we, we had the money before to be able to do it. It's really what Mary and our superintendent's association at the region has talked about. It's more getting organized, finding a fiduciary, finding a group that's going to oversee it. That's been the challenge.
Other questions? Tom, I see your camera's on, but I didn't give a question. Okay. Yep, go ahead. Mary, you've talked mostly about IEPs. That part of the special education or special services. What about the 504 process? You just quickly-
Yep.
Through that in terms of if a family or if someone believes that a student has a disability that has not been identified yet, what, what group of people, what process is taken to determine that disability and to make accommodations afterwards?
So it's the same process that I was talking about. That's called Child Find. So if you suspect that someone has a disability, then we would convene what's called the Evaluation Planning Team. And that group will come together to hear what the concern is and make a decision if they are going to move forward with the evaluation. It would be the evaluation for special education. So you would be looking to go through and answer, is there a disability? Is it having an impact on their learning? And do they need specialized instruction? And so those are the three questions to determine special ed eligibility. You could find that the student has a disability during that process, but that it's not impacting their learning and they don't need specialized instruction. In that case, they would be referred for consideration of a 504 plan. So the 504 team would then pick up where that special ed evaluation left off. They would look at the information and they would go through the criteria. Is it, is that disability interfering with a major life activity? And so they really need to be able to say that it really is impacting the student in terms of access. That's the difference between special ed. It would be about access. And what are the accommodations? So it's not about specialized instruction. What are the accommodations that that student would need to help them access their education? So you still go through that same process because if there is a disability, we have to rule out that the student doesn't need specialized instruction. So the referrals all come in and it, and the team takes it from there.
Thank you. I have one last question. I hope it's a quick one. Now that we have a block grant, I don't know what it's based on. Is it based on ADM? Is it based on number of physical students in the building? And how is it going to be changed once our number of students that we get funded changes in the 2025 school year?
So your question, Edie, is more about the waiting study that's coming in?
Is the waiting study going to impact? Is it, is the, is, because the waiting study is going to decrease the number of students that we get funded, is it also going to add another decrease for the block grant?
John, do you want to jump in or do you want me to?
It's a lot of equalized pupils. It's actual head count.
Okay.
It's bodies.
Perfect. Thank you. I had a moment of panic.
Yeah, no, that's a very, very good question.
All right, Mary, thank you so much. That was really, really, yeah, in-depth for us. And gave us a, it gave me a really much better understanding of what's going on. So thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Mary.
So we are a little bit late, but we're going to give ourselves the time that we need to keep going because I think that sometimes we get out early and sometimes we don't. So, John, we have the 2.4 District Leadership Secession Monitoring Report Review. Do you want to take us through that?
Yeah, and I'll try not to, you know, reiterate what's in here. I did spend quite a bit of time, hope that was evident, like putting it together and outlining. You know, in my opinion, you know, I think pretty objectively, we are, we are needing the, all of the components of this succession plan. We're really fortunate to have, you know, Andrew and Mary, who are both licensed superintendents. Mary was a superintendent in Winuski and also has central office administration, you know, many years of it. And Andrew also has his superintendent license and has been a central office administrator in Mill River and a coach and an instructional leader at Mount A. So we're really fortunate to have two people that I feel confident could step in and do a really good job and keep the, the school district meeting our priorities, meeting our fiduciary responsibilities and also, you know, keep working on our priorities. And then I, I outline also, you know, that what we're doing around developing leaders, including central office leaders throughout our school system. I think then, the, I don't think the intent of this question was really around, what are you doing in central office? But I really broadened that because if I was, or the superintendent, not necessarily me, was out and couldn't fulfill their obligations, it's going to take a lot of support from the principals. And it's going to take support from our director of finance and Rebecca Tebow as well. Who I add in there is, you know, a critical part of the succession plan and somebody who's really done an incredible job of putting good structures and systems in place for our HR department. And then in the end, I, I sum it up with, you know, encouraging the board to really start thinking of succession for the superintendent, you know, not really long-term because it will come. You know, I plan to retire or semi-retire, which I've shared with the board in June of 2025. That may not seem like a long time. But I know when, before I was a superintendent, the executive committee at the time started talking about, what are we going to do to be ready and to keep some of our really big priorities moving in the right direction? Because when you do lead, leave, when you lose leadership that has been in, you know, place for a while, you don't want to backtrack on some of the goals and priorities at the school district. And I was fortunate enough, as I mentioned, that the, the executive committee at the time had a lot of discussion about that and really started thinking about what do we want the, the district to look like? And what kind of leadership play do we, do we want? And then, you know, put a plan in place to do that. Which, you know, I've been here 15 years, so fortunately I have that.
Tom, you have a question. Go ahead.
I just want to say, John, I think this is great and thank you for pulling it together. I, I think it really does, at least from my perspective, as we were crafting these policies, meet exactly what we were looking for in terms of, I think, broadening. I think it was more of an emergency succession plan policy prior. And we really did broaden it to think about when you leave one day. So, so I appreciate you including that in here and also encouraging us to continue to, to focus on that. Also, thank you for including beyond the district office because certainly from my perspective as draft, you know, helping to draft these policies, that's also what I was looking for, to make sure that we're building leaders at every stage of the organization. So I appreciate what you're, you're writing here. You know, and even encourage you in the future to broaden it beyond leadership staff, but even other, other folks you're giving leadership opportunities to even deeper in, in the system. But I, I think this is very well done. I just want to say thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yeah, well said, well said, Tom. Just to, we, we want to formally accept the report, right?
We need a motion. We're-
Yeah, so there may be more discussion, but I'll, I'll move to accept the report as written with no exceptions.
A second.
A second.
Any more discussion on the report? All right, same done. Thank you, John. It was great. We really appreciate the thoroughness and-
We can vote.
Yes, all in favor? Please give me a thumb or say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thumb or a nay? Any abstentions? All right, it looks like it unanimously passes. Sorry, I'm staring at my computer where I can see everybody here, but thank you. Thank you, everybody. All right, moving on to the warning. We have a new education records policy. It's been updated to include the rights ordered under the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, FERPA. They were included in the procedures, but now they will be included in the policy. We don't need a vote for warning. Does anybody have any questions on the policy? Yes, I am.
Just to clarify, the things in yellow are the changes.
Yep. You're welcome.
You picked the right color.
And these are, these are, this is verbiage right from the law that they said needs to go into the policy. That's really all it is.
Do you know how many times a day I have to refer people to that? Here's the link where you can file a complaint.
Sorry. All right, other questions? Are we okay with a community question at this point?
Good question.
All right.
Are any of these reports available for someone who's interested in reading?
Oh, yes. All on the website. It's all attached and linked to the agenda. Everything is, yep.
Thank you.
Published on Frontboard Forum, published on all of the, yeah, all over. Okay. Superintendent Report. John-
You know, I, the only thing I, I mean, I've, I'll take questions. The only thing I want to, you know, I don't want to take anything for granted, but I hope you see a theme tonight that we're really trying to report out on the district priorities and be pretty explicit around, you know, here's some progress that we're making towards them. So I highlight the, you know, the progress we're making on our curriculum alignment. And then, you know, we've done a lot of work on the budget. And there's a lot of information that's available on our website. Our, the annual report is posted- Our, the annual report is posted. The printed copy should be here even tomorrow and we'll distribute that. The budget flyer is at the printer, should be out any day in people's mailboxes. And so I just wanted to to highlight that. And then our, the presidential scholar, which if you didn't, you know, get a chance to see the WCX story, I mean, what a just a remarkable young person. And, you know, we see his family and we have all a lot to be proud of for that young person. Then the MMU way. Just why I did attach an article. And I think I'm going to intertwine this into my budget presentation. But, you know, the high school's done a ton of work around good sportsmanship and putting like resources and people in place to make sure bad things don't happen. I'm not saying that they couldn't at sporting events, but they really worked hard. And when I talked to Dave Marlowe, I'm going to ruin my stories.
He'll teach us to tease it.
Okay, he showed me a picture and he said, John, you would have been so proud of our. There were like 250 kids and they were just having, you know, having fun and cheering, but doing it the right way. And, you know, I just, that's, that's not happening everywhere.
If you're still on Twitter, you can follow him there. I'm not anymore, but he's also on Instagram and you can follow all of his picture posts and all the events that are going on.
One of my favorite MMU sporting moments was the state baseball championship at Centennial Field when there were an enormous number of MMU kids at Centennial Field, mixed in with like a whole bit, you know, with plenty of room to, you know, to kind of go off kilter. And they just were having so much good fun together. It was just fantastic. I mean, it was four or five years ago, but whenever, whenever that was, but I just loved it. It was just great.
Questions for John? Nice, great. Thank you. Congratulations to Hayden. It's very exciting to be a presidential scholar. Highlighted here. Committee reports.
Katie, we are pulling together an agenda for the community engagement committee meeting scheduled for Monday. So I think we are going to be talking a little bit about community comments. We're going to be touching upon some of the updates for the All Together Now project. Some of us that are connected to the land acknowledgement ad hoc are also in the community engagement committee, so that's something that we'll probably discuss. But that's about it. Great.
Lisa, fine, ma'am. Oh, no, back to Katie. Not yet. You're on deck, though.
Also, based on the conversations that came from the last board meeting, I touched base with Edie and I think that we'll be touching base again, but it's clear that community engagement is really important to the board and some of the work that has to be done in the future. So I think sometime in March or in the near future, we'll have a board discussion about what that looks like and if it's if it's about communicating or engagement and, you know, trying to get everybody involved in that. So that's on deck. Thank you.
Lisa.
Hey, we haven't had a committee meeting since the last board meeting, but we do have one coming up on Thursday, which is a budget Q and A. So if you have questions, we have answers.
Excellent. Chuck, negotiations.
Negotiations. We've had a number of meetings, including one this morning. So basically what's happening is that John, Rebecca go and meet with the faculty and the support personnel representatives in different meetings. We're sharing proposals back and forth. And those proposals are on the website. They're kind of interesting. You know, interesting to read. I also just want to say what a pleasure it is to work with Rebecca and just sort of, you know, I think the confidence that the committee has and, you know, and her work in, you know, in all this. One of the things that we've been focused on is just the, you know, the the fact that our pay is lower than districts that we compare ourselves to at all levels, but particularly at the at the lower end. And so we're looking at our our proposals with not just the percentage increases that are happening with the other districts that have already settled, but trying to understand where different proposals will put us in terms of entry level salary. And we're hoping, what we talked about today was over the next, is trying to make up some, you know, trying to make up some ground there. John and Rebecca are about to go back with the faculty.
I'd be real cautious maybe about, you know, you might, we might want to talk about this in something in executive. Not to interrupt you, but I apologize.
Sure.
We probably want to.
So John and Rebecca are going back and meeting with the faculty soon. And they're kind of one meeting behind with the employee support group because somebody got sick and they, you know, and they weren't able to meet.
Thank you. Regional advisory.
Well, we have a meeting coming up on March 14th. And my hope is I'd like to, with your consent, Edie and John, arrange a meeting with the chair of CBU Board, the superintendent in the CBU Board before that meeting to talk about tech education and just sort of get ready. Get ready for that meeting. They're eager to get together, meet with us. It just seems like we'd be more better overall if we can meet before the, with the RAB meeting. They, Angela, the chairperson, Arsenal, the chairperson, CBU has looked at our resolution on tech ed, which I'm kind of elevating now. I kind of didn't push it because I thought that we're making progress, but now I'm not quite so sure, as I spoke about at the last meeting. The meeting on March 14th is kind of the pickup of the long-term vision meeting, which occurred in September. So we're going at a, we're going at a pretty, pretty slow pace on that. The last RAB meeting, we talked about the amount of duplication between Burlington and Essex. And I've done some more work on that and, you know, sent stuff around to people. And I think more people are starting to appreciate the fact that there's a there's really happened a lot of duplication, unnecessary duplication between the programs. They have a lot of programs that have like seven, eight, nine students in them, which I think doesn't make sense to be duplicating programs like that. So I'm hoping, are you up for getting together with us guys? So I'll work on arranging that.
And the, are board members that are interested, the tech ed open houses? Do we just, do they all just happen? I think they all just happen.
I think they're coming up.
Thursday, February, Thursday, February. Okay, I thought they were the, I just see the ninth and the 11th.
I'm so sorry. I didn't elevate that. I should have.
Right. When you say.
It is. It's for families that are taking a look.
Yeah, I mean, they do that and then they do a shadow kind of day, too. So there's, there are different opportunities. Just depends on what it is exactly. Will you send that out to the board if they're still upcoming in case, folks?
I think that the directors would show people around. I think it's a matter of, but it would needs to be during the day.
Yeah, Andrew is going to, that's something that Andrew Jones and I talked about. People that are interested, you know, giving, giving a tour, board members and Andrew.
I think that'd be great. I mean, I'd like to take another tour. I mean, a lot's changed since you and I took a tour.
I know.
But you are. Now we have questions. Our high school students got.
Okay, the dates that I had said that they were just this past week.
No, so.
So those must have been the, it said students and family.
No, they also do a step up date.
You know, the point is we just found out about it for the middle school, so it must have just not made.
Oh, sorry. So that was for CTE Burlington Tech.
It's next week.
Okay, the CTE was last week. Burlington Tech is next week.
Yep.
Great. The SBA, Diane, do you have an update?
Just a couple of quick things because legislative kind of belongs in your court anyway these days. But in terms of the SBA, you know, just I wanted to put this on our record. Based on the public comment today, I noticed in looking for something else that the nutrition and wellness policy, which is a required policy in the SBA, is under review, which means that there's options now for input into how that's going to be reviewed and what may come of it. So certainly public or or board comments on that, you know, now would be a time. Just wanted to put that out there. In terms of the hot things that are going on with the SBA, there's two bills that are getting our quick attention. That would be the one for the relating to childcare and early childhood education. That's a big one, the S-56. And so everyone should take a look at that when they have time to read 100 pages of bill. But I do also have a quick and dirty summary, which I can share with folks as well. It points out the highlights, very comprehensive. It's, it would make a lot of big moves and I'm sure John will have some input into that because it'll change things like budgeting and ADM. And I mean, it's a big, it's a big change. The other bill that kind of is related to it is the S-36, I think, which is that kindergarten entry age bill, which right now has just been referred to the Senate Committee on Education. The reason why these are hot bills is because the executive director of the SBA is asking for our input into their testimony and their positioning around these these two bills. So we're about to give some input for the preschool one and the kindergarten entry age change one. We had already given input and felt that that bill was inappropriate this year, unnecessary to make a change and a waste of time and energy to change the kindergarten age to January 1st, December 31st. And the current bill iteration literally has the parent having the final say. There's no, no other opinion that it could just, they could just change it to that and there would be no, no way to say your child isn't ready. You can't go kind of thing. But that particular bill has come out of a sponsor and has gone to the Senate Education Committee. It has not come out, as far as I know, of the committee, which means it may stick on the wall and not go anywhere. So, but those are just two hot topics. If anyone is interested, please contact me. I can tell you how to get your voice elevated further or bring your positions to our next meeting. And then Edie, I'm sure you know what else is going on with education and the other goals.
Yeah, folks are looking at funding school lunches and how to do that. That's coming up. And then in theory, we're going to be talking about funding schools and how that's going to work. So that might happen next week. Who knows?
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of movement and interest in that based on the Carson B. Makin and the concern about public dollars going to religious institutions. But there's another case I'm trying to see what's going to happen on Vitale where they're actually arguing that the school choice that's offered to people who live in districts without a designated high school is a public good that should be offered to all Vermonters. And so the argument that it's a public good that is not being offered equally to the entire population intrigues me. And so I'm waiting to see what's going to happen with that. Those are the things I'm doing.
I could just offer one observation is that the, I can, I believe there's a likelihood of more and more student choice, which I think is a good thing. But for us to maintain ourselves, we're going to need to establish, which is planning for the future, points of difference which attract students that give our students and families a particular reason to come to our schools.
Yep. I have a whole lot to say about that. I'm not sure we want to spend a whole lot of time on it. But I think that if we're worried about equitable equity to students, we have to be very careful.
So if anybody has any other thoughts that I can bring forward with, especially with those two bills, which they want to do testimony on soon, please feel free. Also on the website, under committees, I'm still listed as the legislative lead. So we should make sure that Diane's name gets put.
Especially because we're one month out from reorganizing.
Yeah.
Join right in. I mean, we need as much as, you know.
No, I'm just saying I want, I want it to be accurate based on.
I wonder, I wonder if the wrong.
Anyone who may be going to the website.
Oh, but yeah, and you were voted on in the middle of the session.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, we'll get it right after March.
Yeah.
Sure. Okay. Previous meeting minutes. Can I get a motion to approve them?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second? Thank you, Heather. And any, all in, any discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes? Can I get a thumb or a yes, please?
Yes.
Hi. Hi.
She said yes.
Whatever. It's all the same.
Did I did?
Yes, good. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Thank you. Want to oppose? I'm going to, well, I don't vote anyway. I wasn't. Okay. Other business. Does anybody have other business? I have two other businesses. But does anybody else have them before I do that? Okay, so two things that I have for other business. The first one is to talk about board priorities. Actually, that's the second one. The first one that I have to talk about is superintendent evaluation. One of the things that I learned this year is that when we're doing our superintendent evaluation, as we have it on the agenda, it is in April, which is after we have board members who start in March. And so there's a bit of illogical, it's not very logical to have people who just joined the board evaluating the superintendent. So I'd like to move that up to before, which would be this meeting. And nobody's prepared for that, which is why it's not on the agenda. So I wanted to have a little bit of a discussion about, and I did, everybody should have gotten an email. Excellent, with all of the tools that we have, which pulled me to our, my next other business. Actually, I'm going to stick with the first one first because, sorry, folks, a lot going on in my brain right now. So I would like us to plan to have an executive session after the first meeting in March. So after that board reorganization to discuss superintendent evaluation. And you can use those tools. You can write something else. You can come prepared to talk. You talk to me one-on-one before that. I want folks to be ready for that, have plenty of notice. So we're a month out.
This is the first or second meeting in March?
This is the first meeting in March.
When we reorg.
When we reorganize. Because this year we don't have anybody new running. So this year it's not a huge issue, but thank you for bringing me back to that. I appreciate it. In the future, we'll do it this meeting. So we'll be prepared to do it earlier for logical purposes. Number two is going to board priorities. And as I was looking at this, this was the piece of our policy governance redo that got set aside. Right, we said we'd come back to a superintendent evaluation. And as we looked at the succession planning that we were review, we reviewed today, we need to have a better evaluation tool for whoever new we're going to have and how that's going to work. Because it's incredibly vague, what we have now. It works for John because he's been here forever. We have a really great communication opportunity, but it's not clear. And it's really, it was based on policy only and then a couple of opportunities. And now we don't have so many policies that we're monitoring all the time. And so it's just going to be less, it's not a good tool. John agrees. It's not a good tool. We had hoped it would be, it's not a good tool.
We could, you know, there's, yeah.
We could do better.
We can do, oh, yes.
So I would like the board priority, the current board priority to be, to get a good evaluation tool. Talked about it with some of the leadership, um, talked about it with John and Rebecca, talked about it with a few other board members, to see perhaps we need an ad hoc team, perhaps it's the leadership group putting it together, perhaps it's working with Rebecca, it's me, Rebecca and John putting it together. I don't know how that's going to go, but to put something better together, that's more in line with how we review principles, based on rubric, based on how we do school things, a little more in-depth. So I just wanted to see if I have general agreement from folks on that. And then looking at further planning is how do we do board priorities down the road? Right? Like how do we, how do we kind of encapsulate that? And I think, um, I've been thinking more about the board reorganization in March. I would love to be chair again, if you want me to be, but that's, you know, but I've been thinking about how do we get everybody doing the things that they're good at doing? And how do we have more opportunity for more in-depth work from board members? And I think that's more ad hoc groups. You know, I think we have more, um, the Abar stuff that Tara's taking on that we would like to bring back to the board. So that could be a group of people working together and we do, you know, quarterly something with the board on that, right? We need more community engagement. And maybe board planning is another piece, that it's another small group of people that's working on that. So I'm just trying to focus on how we do this better long-term and how we keep going, how we keep moving forward. So I'm hoping folks are comfortable with the priority for now being get a good evaluation tool going and that hopefully we have it for September. And then looking in March to see how we reorganize our committees, what makes sense, what doesn't, and all of that. So it's a little heavy for other business, but, uh, yes, Eva.
You know, I, I'm, little feedback there, sorry. I think this is a great idea. I would encourage us to think about the evaluation process as a longer-term project because it's not just about developing a new tool to evaluate John with, but as he expressed, he's got a timeline. We get to really work on this, um, tool to make it work well for whatever succession looks like. So I think it, I think it's, it's not just a short-term priority to get a new tool in place, but it's, it's that process of evaluating, uh, John over the next couple of years so that we, we, we do it well. And, uh, and it's valuable.
Thank you. Chuck?
I think it should be a priority, but you described it as the board priority and then you described like two or three people working on it. You've still got 12 people sitting on their hands waiting to, you know, I think we can do multiple things at a time. You know, this, this doesn't sound like something that's really engaging all 15 people. 15 people will have a chance to touch it at some point, but the process, the options that you've described involve a pre, you know, leadership team or you and John, Rebecca. I understand, I can see how it would be your priority, but I feel like the board as a whole is capable of doing more. I mean, we have, you know, we just, in just in terms of just engagement of individual board members, you know, with people not coming to committees, uh, you know, I think just, there's, I think we're capable of doing multiple things at a time.
Yeah, which was why I said reorganizing the board in March with different ad hoc groups for more folks to be able to.
So the priority between now and the, the meeting after next, I mean, that's what you're working on.
The next, the next meeting is board reorganization.
Right.
Where we would, where I'm hoping, if I get general consensus now, I can come up, because I have a lot of ideas for ad hoc groups and trying to think about what the best ways are to use everybody's.
So I missed, I wasn't listening closely enough. So as of the middle of March, we'll have more people doing more thing, pursuing more. Okay.
Yep.
We used, MMU used to have a long-range planning committee. Which was pushing for the closure of the ID school in 2003.
It worked eventually. Diane?
I wanted to say also that, that one of the beauties of having a large board is that we can divide up some of these tasks and get people engaged in something that they feel like is important to them, they're interested in and bring it back to the board, giving everybody a greater role in the board operations, which I really appreciate. When we move to looking at board priorities, and I know there's been a push to look at long-range versus short-range priorities, they're differing between the two of them. And we just need to define when we do priorities that they're not like encased in stone for like five years. We need to understand that they are the board priorities this year or the board priorities in, for several years, but whichever one, just being really clear. So when everybody uses the words board priorities, we all know what the same thing. No, I want to be able to be really clear. Are we talking district priorities or are we talking board priorities? And have a good definition of both of them. I'm totally fine if we have two sets of priorities or if they're the same, but I just get really confused if we change the language. So I think it'll really help, hopefully more than just me, that's clarified. That's all.
Great. Tom?
Amen. Diane, I agree with you. I think, you know, there's a lot we have to do to define what we're talking about with priorities, whether the district, whether they're board, whether they're both. So I think there's, you know, I think there is absolutely a need for, uh, an ad hoc committee to take this on. We did some great work with the PD ad hoc committee where we emphasized that we wanted to move into, uh, truly doing policy governance, where the board takes on the strategy, the guidance and, you know, administration, of course, what the administration does today. We really want to make sure we're taking the strategy. I think a committee makes a ton of sense. I appreciate you mentioning that as a process.
Tom, we're losing you.
Certainly, I'm willing, between now and, uh, the next meeting, think through what that could look like, but I think a lot, Anne's point helped us get really clear on just defining what we're talking about as a starting point and the evaluation versus.
I think we got most of that.
Sorry, apparently I've got bad, bad internet error.
Anybody else have? Comments on this? So am I getting a general idea that folks are, are warm to this? Do more folks want to work on superintendent evaluation? Is this something that should be a bigger group? Are folks open to having multiple ad hoc groups as options, committees as options when we reorganize?
Multiple ad hocks, I don't need to be on the superintendent one.
Okay. Both folks got it.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. All right, I'm getting consensus from folks in the room. Anybody that's online have something that they are not feeling comfortable with? Okay. I don't believe that we need an executive session tonight, John? All right. Thank you, everybody. We have our next, we have an annual meeting scheduled on March 3rd?
Second.
March 2nd? Uh, it's a Thursday night. It's a, another budget presentation, so there's a budget presentation this Thursday, there's a budget presentation on the 2nd of March. Um, and then we are back to an, our board meeting a month from today on March 13th at Camel's House.
Can I just put a plug in for both of those meetings? We don't need to have, it's not a board meeting, but if you think.
You're talking about the annual meeting.
An annual meeting. It, it's really good to have a good presence at that meeting. Last couple of years, I think because of COVID and whatnot, there's been a handful, I think, of board members there, so, um, please, please attend it. You know, you know, maybe we won't have that many people from the community, but it's really good to have a, a good showing of board members, so try to make it.
What's the date?
The 2nd of March.
This is in person, right? Or did that go on the first call?
It can be rushed. It's postponed, so it'll be a hybrid meeting, just like we've been.
Where is, is it?
MMU.
You get to meet the district, the MMU clerk.
And it's at 6:00 PM.
And normally you get the cushy chairs that the basketball players get. Yeah, sometimes, other times you get the new chairs in the library, but it's pretty comfortable.
And if you do it remotely, you can pick your most comfortable chair wherever you happen to be. Uh, can I get a motion? Does anybody have any other announcements?
I'll move to adjourn.
Thank you. Kevin, second.
Second.
Diane, thank you. Happy day before Valentine's Day. I will see you all in a month, if not before. Thank you. Have a good night.
Good night.
Thanks, Edie.
Thanks, Brett. Well, that worked really well.